It's now 6:00 PM in the regular session of the Planning Commission of City Lancaster. Please come to order. Tonight, we have an invoker. I don't know if he's here, though. Pastor Felipe Seven Dollar? Is that it? No? All right. Vice Chair Hall will offer the invocation and Commissioner Smith will lead us in the pledge. Could please stand?
Bow your head with me. Lord, tonight I ask for your blessings on Jake and Falconer, who stopped the stabbings in Minnesota. I pray for the victims of the terrorist stabbing, that they will heal quickly and completely in New York. We pray for those injured in the attack and for those in New Jersey that they found the bomb quickly. We ask for you, we thank you for protecting our first responders who so quickly respond when they are targeted. We pray for our soldiers and their families that allow us to live in peace and safety. Thank you, God, for continuing to bless our city, bless the staff that prepares these meetings, bless my fellow commissioners, and I ask you to guide our decisions tonight. In your name I pray. Amen.
Join me in slaving the flag of our wonderful country.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the which stands one nation under the law, in the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Commissioners Deanna Cook.
Present.
Miguel Coronado.
Here.
Cassandra Harvey.
Present.
Sandy Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Randy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Vos.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Just to give you a bit of background, folks, this commission meets twice a month. Typically, the week prior to this regular meeting, we meet in an open session with staff to discuss the proposed agenda and to offer our individual input and have our individual questions answered. We do not deliberate, however, but we do meet in a public session. That session is open to the public. Matter of fact, last week, when we had it, we had a couple of guests who came in. However, we do not accept testimony nor do we discuss individually the agenda items that are proposed on our agenda. First item is public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay for the entire meeting, we offer a two-minute period for each person for the next 10 minutes, and if you have an early speaker, we'll let them speak to us now. Do we have any early speakers?
No one has indicated as such, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then, on the regular agenda, any public business from the floor, you're asked to fill out a speaker's card, and when that item is called, we'll call upon you, in whatever order we choose, to listen to your public comments. Typically, there are three minutes. However, applicants or their representatives have an opportunity to speak as long as we'll tolerate it, and often, they have an opportunity to rebut as well. So, those are the rules of the road. Tonight, first item of business is our consent calendar, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, August 15, 2016. Have the motion, please?
I move that we approve the regular minutes of the Lancaster Planning Commission, August 15, 2016.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Please vote.
Was I present for that meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. Tonight, we have one continued public hearing. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We have one continued, two continued public hearings, which we will hear first, then we have routine items on four items, and then we have Item 6, which is a proposed amendment to the municipal code, which most of you folks, I'm assuming, are here to talk to us about. So, first item is Conditional Use Permit Number 1604, which is a continued public hearing, so without objection, the public hearing is open. And does staff have anything they'd like to share with us that we haven't heard before?
Chairman Vos, Commissioners, the item was continued last meeting partly because we did not distribute notices to the tenants of the shopping center. We did that, and also, there was a question about that ABC form that was turned in, which was discussed at the agenda review. Planning's opinion matches that of the speaker who was there, the representative from Sheriff's Department, and...
Let's turn the time over to Mr. Durico, if you want to provide further comments on the form that was provided at the last meeting.
I believe Commissioners Smith and Harvey had some concerns about it, so if you proceed, we'd appreciate it, Mr. Durico.
Okay. Well, I don't have the form in front of me, so, but I can explain the ABC uses for their jurisdiction out of the local office district down here for the southern part of the state has over 500 reporting districts that they identify in that form. And what they do is they take an average of calls for service in each one of those are reporting districts, and they average that across the board, and then if you're 110% of that reporting average, that designates you as a high crime area, okay? But the form is misleading because it doesn't really truly identify any particular area or the aspect of what's immediately adjacent to any potential business that may come into the area as it relates to alcohol. In this case, it was Reporting District 1124. Well, 1124 is a huge reporting district in our area that encompasses a large area going significantly west, all the way to Sierra Highway, Avenue L to Avenue M. So if you take into account the number of calls just by themselves, without actually paring down what those calls were related to and how they may specifically be attributed to a certain area, that's where the problem comes in. And I think in the discussion and looking at how ABC broke this down by having a discussion with them, Jocelyn and I had a discussion with Agent Duran down there and how they come across this process, we can obviously see that for our purposes here at the city, what may be better official for staff to provide the planning commission is a more pared-down version of how those particular calls are, a breakout of what exactly they are, and depending on the district that they're actually in. So, and we have that problem here in the city of Lancaster, as well as Antelope Valley wide, because a lot of these reporting districts were developed long before we had the population density that we now have and businesses. So for the purposes of this, if we bring it down to a more appropriate area based on this particular location, that's significantly reduced. So, where you saw a call volume based on ABC of like 600, well over 600 calls in this reporting district, I can tell you that's like, you're bringing the courthouse into it, you're bringing a lot of issues away from it, you're bringing traffic accidents into it, you're bringing a lot of things that may not be pertinent to what's being discussed here today.
Very good. Thank you.
That was actually my question, I'm sorry, that was actually my question last meeting, was with the traffic accidents, and as close as it is to the courthouse, I figured there was probably a lot of activity there that was maybe being picked up on that report.
And as well as deputy self-initiated activity. As they input that into their logs, that generates a tag number as well.
Okay. Well, thank you for the information.
And from an analytics perspective, this time last week, we did undergo quite a bit of training, if you will, on with that document, what we should glean from that, so I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else?
Mr. Durico, would you say that where alcohol is sold, that crime usually increases?
I wouldn't say specifically where alcohol is sold. I mean, I think we can break that down to that we have some alcohol-related issues that may develop some issues around, in and around an area where alcohol is sold, but to say just generically where alcohol is sold is just a primary reason for crime around that vicinity. There's issues that we have addressed, and you'll, as that's discussed later in the ordinance that's come about, some issues that we are facing as a community as are related to alcohol establishments. I would believe, in this case, based on what I saw as far as the calls for service that are around this area, that has not been the case, and really, based on the type of businesses that surround it, may not be a case down the road, but that's just a personal opinion based on what I saw for calls. To say generically that alcohol-related establishments lead to crime, that's, I can't really say that. I can say that we may have to respond depending on the type of alcohol business it is. Typically, like, you know, bars or nightclubs or things are typically more of a generator as it relates to grocery stores or convenience stores or even liquor stores for that matter. So there's a different type of alcohol-related businesses.
At last Monday's meeting, we had a presentation by Deputy Jordan, and he said that the crimes seem to be following some of the liquor stores that were on the corridor of 10th Street West, and my concern is, is that if we have overabundance of it, that we will attract crime in the future. Is any possibility that will happen, or, I mean, I know it's kind of not a lot of traffic that would foot traffic, but we certainly have car traffic. Will it happen that will continue that growth of crime down the corridor of 10th West?
Well, okay, growth of crime down a corridor, and I mean, I wasn't there when Lance had this discussion. I will say that we've had some problematic locations, hence why we've developed this relationship with those type of establishments to address them, but as a corridor of crime is kind of a concerning statement to me as a public safety director, okay, I wouldn't look at it that way. I will say this particular location, where it's at, based on the type of calls for service that we've had, based on the fact that it's mostly primarily commercial businesses around it, and with a reduced number of residential issues, where I don't think you're going to have a lot of foot traffic as it relates to this location, potential location. Also, I would say is from a aspect of issues we've had with other locations around town with panhandling and issues as it relates to other service providers, that doesn't exist as well, so, and just discussing this particular area. Again, I will tell you from personal experience in that area, having worked patrol in this city, as well as other agencies I work for, that has not been typically a high-crime area, not even close. That's why I thought it was very interesting, and quite frankly, a ridiculous system that ABC breaks out as it relates to this process, because it's so vague and ambiguous to not having a breakdown on what type of causes are. I will tell you that the locations, and as will be further discussed tonight on the presentation by the group that is here, we're putting things in place to address those problem locations. We already have a very good collaborative effort taking place to address some of those issues that it creates, but I don't, you know, I can't just predict where things are going to go. I can go by a baseline we've had for 10 years as it relates to certain issues, and we've addressed those. As far as this location, there's things nearby, like on the city of Palmdale, but the residential area is more to the west, and then I believe, based on the other businesses there, it's not going to proliferate those issues. Now, I could be completely wrong, okay? I'm not going to stand on this and die on the sword here saying that I can predict the future for here. All I can say is if there's issues, we'll address it. But again, this is totally within your purview to decide whether this is an appropriate use or not. I know that my job is to deal with any issues that may arise from that for, in the interest of the community's safety.
How do you feel about having gasoline sold and mini-market where you can buy beer and wine on a major thoroughfare like Highway 14?
Okay.
I mean, you just got to say, and the residential was a long way away.
I didn't say it was a long way. I said it was to the west of it. There's no immediate residential around this location. But I think what you're asking me is to make a judgment. I will tell you myself, I mean, I've gotten gas and bought alcohol at the same location before myself, and it wasn't an issue for me, because I didn't consume it as I was driving down the roadway. Do people do that? Yes. Should they do that? No. Okay? But to say that that is a direct correlation, it's like, I'm not speaking on behalf of what this use may be. I'm saying to you that my experience, based on what's in the area and the type of calls for service, I don't believe this is ABC's outline of how they make a determinate use there, or alcohol licensing is appropriate as at this particular location. Now, that may be completely different in another location in town, based on density, based on other issues that are occurring in that area that are creating issues related to an alcohol establishment.
We have regulations that concerns distance requirements, and one of the things in this item is, is that it's going to ask us to invalidate some of those past distance requirements. What are the reasons for having the distance requirements if they're so easily overcome?
I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Durico, more likely for Ms. Corbett. Or Mr. Ludicki.
I would propose that Mr. Ludicki could speak to that.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. The intent of the distance requirements is to say that, in general, certain kinds of alcohol establishments should be located certain distances from what are known as sensitive uses. The waiver in this case, I believe, actually stems from the fact that immediately on the south side of this intersection, within the jurisdiction of Palmdale, I believe that mini-market there sells alcohol. That's the request for the waiver in this case, where you have two similar uses near each other. As far as why is there a provision allowed for waiver, it's to address issues like this where there may not be a good reason to apply the distance requirement in certain instances.
Do you think that's a good idea when it concerns public health and safety, which alcohol directly impacts?
You know, when you start kind of blending those two issues together, it's not as clear-cut as you may look at in that regard. I've, as the original author of this particular alcohol ordinance that we have in place, as well as a lot of research that I've done on other things, I can tell you, I've looked at dozens of studies that attempt to find what you're looking for, which is correlation, causation, and generally, what you come away with are more questions than answers. It's a complex subject, because it simply involves human behavior in many cases. You know, I think the most interesting study I ever saw looked at the issue of dry counties in Texas that went wet, and there was a researcher who said, "Well, let me find out what the, you know, happened in terms of crime in those areas." And what he found was certain types of crimes went up and certain kinds went down. So, it's not as easy as simply saying, "This is the requirement. Nothing can ever be closer than this to something else." And that's the reason that I think most good regulation, as we have here, says this is kind of the guideline, if you will, that we're looking for, but we recognize that there are going to be situations where maybe those don't apply, and there ought to be some provision to allow deviation from those if you've got sound reasons for doing so.
If we do decide to strip the alcohol portion out of this CUP, is there a method for the applicant to appeal it? Appeal the decision?
Yes. Any decision of the commission is appealable to the city council.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Anything further from staff before we hear from the applicant? While you're looking that up, just for the record, we've received from the applicant, Westside Plaza LLC, an uncontested letter that agree with the recommendation of staff and recommend that we approve their resolution, including the waiver of the distancing requirement.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jeff Little, who I believe is representing the applicant in this matter, does have a speaker's card.
Mr. Little, welcome back. You have not changed a whole heck of a lot since the last time I saw you.
Neither have you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vos. I'm here just to answer any questions that the commission may have. I'm looking for approval of conditional use permit, so if there's any questions from the commission that I could answer or hope to answer, that's what I'm here for.
Very good. Thank you. And there may be some. Anyone? Nope? All right. Any other speakers?
I have no other cards on this item.
All right, then. Anything further from the members? So then, without objection, we'll close the public hearing and consider a motion on this item.
I have an amended motion here for adopt resolution 1605, approving conditional use permit 1604 with the following modifications. Alcohol sales are specifically not approved, so finding number one is modified to read as follows. The proposed use of a mini-market and gas station is in conformance with the general plan land use designation of commercial C. Findings six and seven are deleted. Condition one is hereby modified to remove reference to Planning Commission Resolution 15-29 and replace it with reference to Planning Commission Number 10-23. Staff is hereby directed to modify further condition one with respect to the standard conditions listed in Planning Resolution Number 1023 to meet with the intent of the commission's actions in approving the proposed use without alcohol sales. Conditions number two and three are hereby deleted. Revised condition number two is added to state, the sale of alcoholic beverages from a mini-market is strictly prohibited.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Further discussion? None? Clearly, does, since this is an alternate motion, then that was, which was recommended by staff, and that's a tongue twister, isn't it? Are we all clear on what the motion is?
Basically, the alcohol.
All right.
Motion fails. 3-3.
Yeah, it's a tie vote, so the motion fails. So we can't have a motion reconsider, however, we can accept a motion on staff's recommendation. Is that be correct?
Yes, actually, because you haven't acted.
Yes, we have.
Well.
It's a tie vote, so the motion fails.
Yes.
If no one cares to offer another motion, then there's no action.
Okay.
So, does anyone care to offer a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number 1605, approving conditional use permit number 1604.
Thank you. All right. Aren't we all clear on what's been offered? All right. Please vote.
I have a question.
All right, then, we can't vote if you have a question.
Sorry.
Go ahead. If you have a question.
Now, the first...
Want to rewind the clock, please?
The first motion is to accept this resolution without the alcohol sale.
No, the motion is staff's recommendation as in your agenda. The motion that Commissioner or Vice Chair Hall offered was defeated.
Okay.
So the motion before us is to approve, including the waiver. All right. So, if we're ready to vote, please vote. That motion fails. Anyone care to offer anything else? As the vice chair pointed out, there is an appeal opportunity for the applicant, who's certainly very familiar with filing appeals with city council. Next item is continued public hearing on tentative tract map number 66680 and tentative parcel map 69747 and 70303. So without objection, the public hearing is open on item three. We have received, for the record, we have received an uncontested letter from the applicant indicating that they agree to all the proposed conditions. Anyone care to hear a staff report on this item? Nope? All right, then. Do you have any speakers on item three?
No speakers, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. So then, without objection, we'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I move to grant a time extension to August 18, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution number 07-54.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right. Thank you. The next items are new public hearings for one-year extensions on items 4A, 4B, 4C, and 4, excuse me, 4A, B, and C. For the record, we received uncontested layers from those applicants. Legal, you have any objection? If we take them all up at once? You have any objection? If we take them all up at once?
No.
Okay. So what's your pleasure? No speakers, all right?
Not on any of those items, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Good.
Do we have to make a motion for each one, or just a blank motion?
You can make a motion, make a motion and read into the record the recommendation on each three.
I'd like to make a motion to grant a one-year extension to September 18, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the revised condition list, attachment to resolution number 06-66. Grant a one-year extension to September 18, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution number 06-67. And grant a one-year extension to September 17, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution number 06-67. And grant a one-year extension to September 17, 2017, based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution 07-40. Is that it?
Thank you. Do you have a second, please?
I second.
Thank you. Anything further?
Motion on 4A, B, and C passes 6-0.
Thank you. All right. Item five, Conditional Use Permit 8947, amended, not amended to, rather than amendment to, right? I said it's amended to, rather than amendment to.
Yes. Yes. Amended to.
Odd way to phraseology, isn't it?
Yeah.
Really is.
We worked a long time on coming up with it.
You know, I learn something new every day, and now I've learned that an amendment could also be an amended.
It's an amended use permit.
A new word. Thank you, Brian. So, without objection, the public hearing is open on this item. Do we have speakers?
Yes, we do have a speaker's card.
All right. May we have a staff report, then, please?
Chairman, council members, this is a request for construction of a approximately 5,800-square-foot gymnasium and four 960-square-foot modular classrooms at an existing... 5,800-square-foot gymnasium and four 960-square-foot modular classrooms at an existing facility. This was, this facility has been here since before the city was incorporated, approved by a zone exception, essentially a CUP by the county. It was for a church sanctuary and education complex. In 1980, there were two CUPs with the City of Lancaster that expanded, that expanded the facility quite a bit. Essentially, none of the approved construction occurred from those conditional use permits, though. So then, in the 2005, a director's review was approved that allowed construction of classroom building and the sanctuary that's existing now. Basically, a similar, approval for similar structures that were approved back in 1990. Excuse me, I said 1980 earlier, it's 1990. And then, in 2014, four modular classrooms were approved by director's review. So this comes back to us now as a conditional use permit, essentially because it's the expansion, enough expansion has occurred that there's, it's time for a reevaluation of the CUP. And what they're requesting is the replacement of three existing classrooms with three modular classrooms. The gymnasium is a, essentially, a play area. It's not a gymnasium to hold sporting events, but the enclosure of an current outdoor play area. And then, there's one additional classroom being requested north end of the site, which is, will just allow them more room for flexibility in their, in their use there. They're currently at 400, or 375 students, and they don't have any plans to expand. In fact, they say that the, that they are at their max capacity with their agreement with the school district. However, we still, in our condition list, capped enrollment at 395 students in case their agreement with the district changed, just because that would be another, another 20 students, which would just about be one more classroom. And so, that would be sort of a maxing out of, of the buildings that are on-site now. Recommending approval mainly because the, besides the, the replacement of the, of the current classrooms is, you know, just a benign swap, and the gymnasium is going to enclose an outdoor play area that's probably now quite loud, and it'll help with the noise levels quite a bit. There's just a few more parking spaces being added, which will give them more options for distributing their parking. Yeah. That's about it.
All right, thank you. Members have any questions to staff? Go ahead.
Who owns Life Source, or whatever this is, this school? Who owns it?
The, Life Source International Charter School is the, is the owner, I believe. I would have to look at the.
They are the applicant, it's a charter school, right?
They're the applicant. I believe they're also the, the owner. I believe they're configured as a, you know, an independent 403C. But I don't, I would have to look at the file to make sure.
I was just wondering.
All right, thank you. On the last page of your write-up, the second, I guess it would be the second of three bullet points. Recommendation is a 10-year review with an opportunity for staff to grant extensions up to a maximum cumulative total of five years beyond that date. So in effect, that's 15 years. Is that correct?
Right.
Life expect, the life expectancy of new modular buildings, and I must assume they're new, not necessarily rehabilitated or used.
They're new.
They are new?
New, yes.
Okay. Is 30 to 40 years. So why would you want to look at it in 10 years? Just because of the, to determine the operation or the life expectancy of the buildings or something?
I think Mr. Ludicki might have to answer that.
You know, so we went back and looked at, we haven't dealt with this, actually, for a while, this kind of a request, but on many of the private schools throughout the city that have used these, this has been the typical timeframe that has been approved for them. And it really, since I know that in your business, you work with school districts and the acquisition of these types of buildings, you may be able to shed a little more light. Our past experience was that at about 10 years, it was a good opportunity to look and see if proper maintenance is being done, if they're being maintained well, you know, and see whether or not there's, there's something that needs to be considered in those.
I don't have any objection, you know, addressing the aesthetics of any project. However, we don't do that for anybody else that I'm aware of. Any conditional use permit, we don't recycle it every 10 years. We have the opportunity to, particularly alcohol beverage sales, to go back and look at them periodically at our, on our motion to the most city council, right?
Yes.
So that just seems a little odd. However, you know, typically, those, those types of units, depending on who the manufacturer is and the type, how they're built, 20, 25 years is not unusual before you have to rehabilitate them. And, so, man, just seemed odd to me. That's why I brought it up. That's all. All right. Anything further from anyone? No, no speakers on this, right? Or we do have?
Yes, we do have a speaker.
Go ahead.
Linda Perry.
Linda Perry. Ms. Perry, is it? Welcome. Evening. Good work.
Hi. I live right across the street from the school. I moved and bought my house in 2014. We've had the school across the street prior to this one. Didn't give us any problems. This school, when you go down the street at 3:00, it's just a regular street, down the street at 3:00, there are three lanes of traffic all the way down the street. Has anyone ever told you that? Three lanes of traffic. You can't get to your own house. My house is directly across, on the right side is a house, the end house, there's no other house after that, and there's another house on the other end, and then all the other houses. The traffic never stops. And what I don't get is why aren't they building a parking lot on Beach? Why are they doing it on Cedar Avenue, on a regular street, in a regular neighborhood? I love school for kids, but this school is out of control. As far as maximum? And no parking, I don't know what you're talking about, parking. I guess it's when school's out, when it's the weekend, yeah, cars can go inside and park. There's no parking. The parking is on the street. And we have to park behind the smoke shop or whatever when it's 3:00, because there's nowhere to park. I have seen ambulances waiting in line and police cars. So, no, I'm not in favor of this school. They're disrespectful. The people, the parents, they stand right in front of the wrought iron fence that we put up to try and make it look nice and let them know this is our property line. And instead, they stand right in front of the wrought iron fence, they throw food on our lawn, they throw shoes on our lawn, whatever they feel like throwing on our lawn. And it is true. And that is why I'm very disappointed. I'm disappointed at the turnout, for one, but I'm very disappointed that no, we've called the City Hall, and, and I called the City Hall and left a message. He called me three months later. He went down during summer. You can't see anything that's going on in the summer. Ask the police about it. They've gone down there, they've seen how it is. And now, I mean, this is, it doesn't have anything to do with it, but my daughter-in-law got her car red-tagged because she calls the police to say that it's just out of control. You know, I can't, I can't park in, in, in front of my house, I can't park near to my house. And people won't even move to let me park. And all they have to do is just move over a little bit and let me park in my spot, then they can go back, you know, and wait or whatever.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Welcome. Oh, I'm sorry.
My hearing aids weren't quite tuned up, so I didn't hear that last comment. At any rate, does staff care to respond?
Well, I'll respond in, in general. Having spent the last two to two and a half years working on a safe routes to school plan throughout the city, the complaints that, that Ms. Perry has brought forward could apply to every single school that, that we have, and I agree with her. You know, that, that is a, I haven't, we haven't dealt with a single school where that issue at, sometimes a drop-off, but really a pickup seems to be the issue. And even in those cases where we have public schools with parking lots, many parents, I actually heard this from the West Side School District Superintendent, she has parents who'll actually stake out their parking space a, an hour and a half before school lets out. You know, it's, it's, I, I'm not quite sure how you address some of that issue. We have a, we have a community where everybody drives, basically, and I could take her to just about any school site and see the, the same situation. I, I, I do understand her concern. We're trying to figure out ways to address it, but I don't know that I have a good one for her at this point.
Excuse me, ma'am, the public comment is closed.
I would say this, if, if there are really specific issues on access and other things that are being compromised, we have Mr. Durico here, and I, I think we would probably be able to look into a little bit more of some maybe targeted enforcement, which we have done, you know, in a number of school locations where we've had these issues. I, I, I think in every single school that we went, when we would ask people what the biggest hazard was, they would say parents.
Well, it's traffic issues 20 minutes twice a day, 185 days a year, or 186 or 182, depending on their program. And you're right, Brian, it's, it's a little less problematic in the morning because parents are dropping off, and it's more problematic in the afternoon because folks tend to hog the street, the parking, any circulation, and they're just plain rude. You're being very polite, but that's my observation, so. And it, they become a little better in high school. However, elementary school parents tend to be a lot more rude than high school parents do. That's just another observation, right?
One, one other comment, and the speaker indicated she's on Cedar. I don't know if they have the opportunity to shift some of their activity over to Beach as far as pickup or drop-off. I don't know whether, Tim, whether that issue was addressed.
Yeah, I could, I could comment on that. So this, you know, our, I essentially just didn't have time to stake out the school a lot. I went there and observed morning drop-off, that's the only time I was able to get there. I wasn't able to get there for afternoon drop-off. And, you know, and there was a delay, but they had someone, you know, directing traffic, and it, and it seemed, it seemed, you know, as far as those sort of things go, you know, minimal. But knowing that we wouldn't know what it's like to live next to this school, you know, we sent out letters not only to the homeowners, but also to the residents, which we normally don't do, the, just the adjacent properties, we sent out letters to the residents, basically relying on them if there was a big problem to come in tonight and let you and us know. Because there are some issues that it seemed like things are working well, but that might not, that might cause problems. For instance, their main parking lot, they don't really use for parking that much. That's where they do the drop-off and pickup, they have the kids line up out there. And the, and then it seems that a lot of the employees park on Beach Avenue. So if this, if this is a problem, then I think there are solutions. We didn't, or I didn't condition anything in these, in the, in this list of conditions because, you know, it just didn't seem like there was a problem. But for instance, we could theoretically, the drop-off and pickup could occur in the parking lot, you know, in a loop. So you get those, you know, you get a stack of six cars or something out of the roadway. Or it could happen maybe on Beach Avenue. The, or we could just require that they, that they use, that they use a certain portion of their parking lot, you know, for parking, regardless of where the drop-off occurs. I mean, there are, there are things that could be done.
Would it be possible to make time on the street where they're just one way? Beach goes one way, Cedar goes another way, and just have that for certain periods of time?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't think that would be.
Well, here, I'm sorry, Vice Chairman, but Beach, that would be like impossible, okay? Only because of how heavily Beach is traveled, and there's a significant number of multifamily buildings and res, single-family residential down the street. The issue on Cedar is, is the homes that are on the east side of Cedar have driveways that lead into, and they usually typically have a front home, and then later on, multifamilies move into the back of them, so there's like some fourplexes there. But the problem is on the west side of Cedar, there is no parking except in the alley behind the locations. So there's no on, everything is on-street, parking for the residents there unless they park in the alley behind them. So there is no driveways for a number of those homes on the front side of the street, or the front of the properties. The other issue is, is that for years, this was the Church of Nazarene that was there forever, and that was the parking lot. What you see is the playground now was the parking area for the church members. So some people parked out in front, on the street parking, and the frontage is limited, and then they parked in behind the locations. So this is now what's become the playground for the school. They have a, they have a distance of some curbside out on Cedar, but I can see where this could be an issue. Now, we can try and address this from public safety standpoint. We do have a school safety program we've re-initiated now that we've hired three more parking enforcement people, that we can work with the Sheriff's Department's traffic detail as we address this. And as Mr. Ludicki has said, this is a significant problem around a lot of the older schools in our community because they were never designed for vehicle traffic. The parking lots were just built for faculty only typically. So we can certainly address it from that standpoint to try and determine if there is some solution in the area. I mean, I know some of the property that is on the east side of Beach, south of Jay, was in our redevelopment zone, so not sure who owns that property, if, or what access could be attained on there. But Beach is very heavily traveled, very heavily. Cedar, not as much, but Beach, very heavily traveled.
So with what's been discussed here tonight, if we... So with what's been discussed here tonight, if we approve this conditional use permit the way it is proposed, or approve amended to of the conditional use permit, and direct staff, code enforcement, traffic, all the rest of the issues that have been raised by all of us tonight, would that, would the conditional use permit be valid, valid, and the administrative function work? Or do we need to overlay the CUP with those requirements that were just discussed?
I think if you were to approve and provide direction on the administrative side of it to, to see if there are ways to, to address the issue that have been raised, I, I think that would be appropriate. As you mentioned earlier, conditional use permits are always something that the commission can call back to itself if, you know, and in this case, if staff or public safety says, hey, I, you know, we can't seem to address this issue, or there, there are some significant public safety concerns, then I think we would want to talk with the school and maybe take it to a, to a different discussion level.
That's it. Go ahead.
Quick question. Did you guys say enforcement, like having cops out there and ticketing?
First of all, our mission always is in the safety of the students and the drop-off. We typically work it from a compliance issue. So writing a ticket right out of the gate is not something we do, okay? What we want is compliance. We work with the school. We work with the student, the faculty at the school who have bus duty or parent drop-off duty. And then we work with the parents to, you know, we can't have them three-deep out in the street and letting grade-school kids out of their car, three-deep in between other cars. You can't see them. So it's, so it's trying to change the behavior. The ticketing thing would obviously be a last resort based on an individual we're continually dealing with who's violating that. And you can look at that a lot of ways. It could go beyond a ticket to a lack of supervision issue, to placing a child endangerment issue just based on those conditions. So if, I've seen kinds of things you can't believe where a parent will actually, on a busy thoroughfare on some of the locations we have adjacent to schools, park across the street and ask young kids to walk across the street, actually physically jaywalk to a convenient spot for where they're parked. Okay, so this is always in the interest of safety and compliance, and that's how we operate here as a city. That goes for code enforcement, that goes for public safety, that goes for parking, everything. Initially, when a warning's appropriate, issue a warning. A ticket is the last resort.
Sir, the private schools that I see around here are always somehow safe. There's a way in and there's a way out. This particular school is, it's low-income. The majority of the students are African-American and Latinos. It's a poor school. I've been in that particular school. There's really, it's a horrible condition for the most part. What I see here is a, some kind of 5,150 square foot gymnasium, what they, which is ridiculous to me because some of these teachers are sweating when they're trying to teach these kids from low-income parents, and it's absolute a disaster, aside from the school itself. What the lady is talking about is absolutely 1,000% true. But for me to have or see officers out there, which by the way, everybody knows I support them, and, and kind of blaming the, the parents for not having enough space to drop off their kids or to coagulate traffic during the afternoon times, which is horrific, again, if you go to private schools, you will see that there's ways, but there's no ways for this low-income schools that consistently market to low-income kids who have a very difficult time to navigate the specific system. And then we want to go ahead and build more space to house these kids who end up coming to our communities unprepared, which is of course another issue. But my concern would be to enforce this with officers and blame the parents when we should be blaming the people that are asking for extensions to build things or whatever it is that they're asking for that makes no sense to me. And they put the life of not only the child because of the traffic, but the life of the child intensive learning throughout their life because they end up being, for the most part, dropouts because they're under those horrible conditions. And if you really look at any other charter school that targets African-Americans and Latino students, we have the same problem, but we don't have those sort of problems in private schools that offer education for usually non-minorities. So I would say to you, sir, that I hope that we do not punish the parents for behavior that has nothing to do with them, but a lack of planning as far as streets are concerned, and possible enforcement by police officers. I live, my family lives on the west side. I own a house on the west side. And for a while, police officers were stopping parents for doing illegal maneuvers when there's really no other way to navigate the streets because it's utterly congested. And as Mr. Ludiki alluded to, that happens everywhere. So I don't think we should be punishing the, the citizens because first of all, they hardly have any money. So if we ticket them or whatever it is, even if that's the last resort, even if we resorted to that, it'll be a punishment to the parents, and I don't agree with that.
So you don't agree that actions and outcomes that violate the laws of our country and our state and our city should not be enforced, Commissioner?
Sir, they, laws should always be enforced. This is our rule of law country.
Thank you. I misunderstood you there. Shall we go on?
May I, on something, and, you know, respectfully, Dr. Coronado, so before we get too far wrapped around the axle on, on getting off topic, what I would like to say, I, I heard you clearly, Mr. Durico, regarding code enforcement, and you did say that you just don't go out and just start writing tickets. So, so I'm glad you clarified that for us. I'm just trying to understand, and just so that you know, Dr. Coronado, if you look at the fact that this has been around since September 10th, 1969, so I think what's happened over the years, because it was a church, right? If I'm not, the Church of the Nazarene, I believe?
With a daycare.
Right. So it's.
Actually with a, with a day school.
So neighborhoods have sort of encroached and built around over time. Logic would dictate that. Is that fair to say?
Yes. I, I mean, up until the mid-2000s, I believe, this operated as a church and a, a school, preschool through eighth grade, I believe.
Right. So, so I would think to do due diligence for our citizens that do live in that area, I think if we would make a motion that somehow weaves in, if we can use the right language, where code enforcement can go out and maybe perhaps create ways to address the traffic congestion, along with, you know, the city engineers perhaps, is that maybe perhaps fair for this body to make some sort of, I don't know, lean it that way? To me, I think that's fair.
I, I agree. Something definitely needs to be done. It can't just be approved just the way it is.
But I don't, I don't think, and I don't mean to cut you off, I don't think that it has anything to do with it being a lower socioeconomic school. I just want to make sure that, you know, that everyone knows that this body does not believe that wholeheartedly. I don't think you really feel that, Dr. Coronado.
No, it's not a matter of, I think that it's because it's a socio-economic, low-income school that we're just going to let them do whatever it is that they want. What I'm just specifically saying, from what I heard, the term was targeted enforcement. So when I heard targeted enforcement, that to me indicated that there was going to be some kind of enforcement. Targeted enforcement.
But it's code enforcement. We use that same language when we talk about the signage in town, code enforcement, you know, being compliant perhaps to what the regulations and the rules are for the city, this great city that we're serving. So I think it's fair for, you've led us in on as far as you know that they're not going to just write tickets out of the, out of the gate. You explain that to us, Mr. Durico.
Okay. First of all, no one said targeted enforcement.
I heard.
Said what this is, is we will look at a situation, work closely with the school as it relates to the parents for the safety of the students. Law enforcement is there just to be a representative if there's an issue, but again, tickets are a last resort based for non-compliance. Okay, so non-compliance means being warned and advised over a period of time of the same behavior that potentially puts the students in danger. That is the primary function, okay? And that's the same thing to say that we're targeting someone. No one's being targeted. It is a school safety issue. As Mr. Ludiki said, we work closely with safe routes to schools. The focus is for students to safely get to school and leave school. And sometimes the students don't have a choice based on what their parents' behavior is. So that's the issue. The targeted enforcement was not a term I used.
No, it wasn't you. It was Mr. Ludiki. I apologize. That's why, good, I wrote it down. So when I heard that particular term, I was concerned because immediately I just saw deputies stopping cars for whatever violation they might have. That was my concern because of the particular term. I wasn't specifically saying anything because it's a low economical school. Even if it's a low economical school, if a person violates traffic or anything and it's their fault, then of course, they should pay for it. But it's not, in this particular case, the citizens that drop off, that drop off and pick up their kids. If that congested area, as the lady pointed out, it's a humongous problem. So it's a problem for her, it's a problem for the school, it's a problem for the parents, and we're the city, and we need to fix it. That's what I'm saying.
I, I have to mention to Dr. Coronado that, you know, you talked about the socio-economic impact. Paraclete is, is a private school. We've heard many people complain about the traffic at Paraclete, and that to me, you know, does not qualify as a low socio-economic school. And so I think to, to take it and just kind of make it either this way or that way, to me, is bothersome.
Again, Commissioners, I hope that, I'm somehow not making myself clear. Again, we have a problem with traffic. That's the problem that the lady, I'm addressing exactly what the lady said. That's number one. Number two, that traffic is horrendous, as you heard her say. Number three, obviously, we have to hold somebody responsible. It's either going to be the school because there's not enough space, or the owner of this life source. It's going to be the parents for violating traffic laws, or it's going to be us, the city, that needs to fix it to make sure that our community is safe regardless of socio-economic status. That's the least of my concern. If it was an all-white school, I'll still be saying the same thing.
So what do we want the language to say? As opposed to just, the motion?
Commissioner Harvey, I, only reason I would be against making changes in the motion would be, there's a lot of different language that has to be included to make it correct, and I've always been warned not to be writing the rules up here, but Chairman Vos brought up an interesting point where he said that we could direct city staff to do this if we made the motion as it was written and said with the, you know, with the proviso that they could look at traffic and come up with some plans in the future. That's just kind of.
I think we're talking past each other. That's basically what I'm asking.
I, I just kind of want to make sure that we're not.
No, no, you and I, we're clear.
Okay.
So again, the, the question is, what, what does that language want to be?
I think you can simply direct city staff to investigate and, if necessary, address behavior that places students at risk regarding pickup and drop-off. You know, as, as Mr. Durico indicated, this is not an uncommon thing from, from our standpoint. We are, we deal with this at, I think, just about every school in this city.
This is the Charter of Lancaster School District, is it not?
Yes, it is.
They have oversight under the Charter provisions for the budget oversight and the day-to-day operations of, of a school. So my assumption would be that if staff is so directed, they would engage both the operator of this charter as well as Lancaster School District in potential solutions that have been discussed tonight. For, I for one would not want to impact the use of this particular site unless there's a clear danger to students, staff, parents, and community. And as you pointed out, Commissioner, it's been in operation since 1969. Most of the residences to the west were built in the 1950s, as I recall, and then some in the 60s. At least that's my memory of it. So, so what's your pleasure?
To make a motion?
Go ahead.
And make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 16-07 approving conditional use permit Number 89-47 amended to directing staff, city staff, to investigate ways to address the traffic congestion.
Second.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Do we all understand the motion? Any further comments from anyone?
Yes, sir. Understood clearly.
Go ahead.
No, I understand it.
Ready?
Motion passes 5-1.
5-1. Thank you. All right. So tonight, the next item is a public hearing on an amendment of the Lancaster Municipal Code Alcohol Beverage Establishments and the repeal of a previous, previously adopted ordinance Number 1013. Tonight, we have staff will be presenting to us, as well as City Councilman, former colleague, Raj Malley. So Ms. Chisima, are you going to lead this off? Or Ms., Mr. Malley?
Sure. You know, while I was sitting.
Welcome. You know, there's still a seat down there. You could.
Yeah, I don't mind coming sitting. Actually, I miss sitting with you guys. I was sitting, thinking about, you know, while I was here. Last year, it was been a year now, that last meeting, I was in Planning Commission last September. Then October, I got appointed to the council. So it's been a year, and I miss, you know, working with you guys. You guys are doing a great job. But that being said, I just wanted to be here and so, after multiple meetings we had with owners and the staff and everybody, and finally we came up with really good. I hope this will work with everybody. We, we want to work, clean up the city with panhandling and all the, so I think pretty much Toy is going to go over everything, but I just wanted to say this, this will help city, clean up the city, and our owner, business owner, will be also happy to work with us. So we're all working together. So I want to thank you guys just taking the time and looking into this, and we need your input as well. So thank you. Toy?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chair Vos and members of the commission. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to begin the discussion on the item before you tonight, Amendment of the Lancaster Municipal Code Alcohol Beverage Establishment and repeal of the previously adopted ordinance Number 1013. Briefly, by way of background, at the May 2016 Planning Commission meeting, the commission reviewed ordinance 1013, which placed restrictions on the size and quantity of containers of alcoholic beverages that could be sold at certain establishments within the city. The item was then forwarded to the council for adoption at their June 14, 2016 meeting, which was attended by several industry business owners who expressed their concerns with the ordinance and the potential impacts associated with such container restrictions. The city council did adopt ordinance 1013, but as a result of the public comments from the business community and their commitment to work with the city in addressing the public safety issues, the council voted to delay the effective date to January 2017 and directed staff to work with the committee of industry representatives, many of which are present tonight, and I'm sure will have comments, to present alternatives to ordinance 1013, still focusing on public safety and the associated nuisances as Councilmember Malley referenced. For the past three months, spearheaded by Councilmember Malley, the committee, as well as staff, Jocelyn, Lee, and, and Brian and myself, we've had several internal and external discussions. We've met regarding the effort to design a public safety strategy regarding alcohol sales. We reviewed the public safety and nuisance issues surrounding alcohol sales to ensure the city's position and goals were understood and acknowledged, making clear the specific purpose and charge. We've met with and listened to the business owners and industry prof- We've met with and listened to the business owners and industry professionals to ensure the city better understood their perspective and the changes in the industry. We also met with ABC and sheriff liaisons to better understand their perspective on the nuisances and issues, and to be sure that what we presented, the solution, was viable and responsive to their concerns as well. We have actually toured the city and looked at what I would call the good and the bad establishments, in terms of what some of those best practices look like. We've also identified best practices for alcohol establishments to consider and implement accordingly. We have begun working on the creation of an alcohol sales business improvement committee. And lastly, we have drafted the new ordinance, which you have before you tonight, relating to alcohol beverage establishments, with a focus on business compliance and cooperation relating to alcohol beverage establishments. And we also have, in the ordinance, speaks to local control in dealing with the issues through administrative process. We are confident, as Councilmember Molly mentioned, that these efforts with the proposed ordinance and what's to come from the business improvement committee will be a viable solution to addressing the issues surrounding alcohol sales in our community, thus creating, thus enhancing public safety, with the focus on enhancing residents' quality of life. The draft ordinance was presented to the Criminal Justice Commission last week, and they did unanimously approve for recommendation to the council. After tonight's discussion and hopeful approval, we will then, it will be moved forward to the city council for consideration at their October meeting. And again, to be very clear, because I know some of the business owners have asked, the ordinance before you tonight would repeal 1013, so I just want to be clear on that. This concludes my presentation. We are available for commentary, but I also know that many of the industry professionals would like to speak and share their support on behalf of this, too.
Very good, thank you. Any questions?
I just wanted to thank Councilman Molly and Toy Chisholm for their work on this. As much heartburn as I had with 1013, this other one is an impressive improvement. Thank you very much.
Certainly it is. All right, do we have speakers? Mr. Ludicki?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't, I didn't mention, I don't think, that the public hearing is open, or did I? I guess I did. I think I did.
Yeah. Is it open? Okay. Mary Trichelle?
Ms. Trichelle, welcome.
I'm Mary Trichelle, the owner of WA Thompson Distributing. We've been in business here since 1959 in Lancaster. I was charged with leading this group by the mayor. There's been an awful lot of hard work and compromise on behalf of the retail members of the committee. We worked really hard to reach a compromise with the city to meet what you all are looking for. We are hopeful that it will evolve the way Mr. Durico says it will. And a huge compromise, but a lot of work and a lot of conversation, and it should address everything that you've been looking for. And that's all that matters.
Very good, thank you.
Unless you have questions with me?
Thank you. Appreciate your hard work, definitely. I had the opportunity to attend, I believe, two of the three meetings, and you're absolutely correct, a whole lot of hard work. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Merle McLernan.
Evening, Merle, welcome.
Evening, Chairman Vos and Planning Commission. I'll be short and quick, there's several people that want to talk. This ordinance simply addresses behavior, which is what we needed to do to begin with. It's flexible enough, it's long-term enough, and the enforcement angle of compliance versus punitive allows us to work with ourselves. So if you're screwing up, it's obvious, and public safety can step in and say, here you go, it's in writing. The previous 1013, I don't think directly addressed behavior, which has simply addressed a possible root cause, and sometimes, that's true. But I think this is more far-reaching, and I think it'll be a lot more effective. Might also note, something like this might apply to your next thing on here, too, when you get to it. Thank you.
Stick around, we'd be happy to hear your comments. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Steve Kinsey.
Mr. Kinsey. Welcome, Steve.
Welcome. Mr. Vos, commissioners, again, I wanted to reiterate what my business partner, Merle, had to say, and also give you the viewpoint. I also serve on the Board of Directors for the Los Angeles Brewers Guild, and we would like to see 1013 repealed, and that 1724 or 42 goes in its place. I think this is exactly what we needed, and I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any other speakers?
Yes, Fran Saras.
Fran, come on down.
I ain't gonna be able to speak too long. I'm waiting for access. I miscalculated the time tonight. Good evening, Chairman Vos, Lieutenant Chairman Hall, and commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen, and members of this committee that wants to start a committee. This committee that's going to, that they want to put together is for the safety of the community, and has, it's going to be a body of themselves, which is, they're going to be the sole governing party of themselves, so that we are going to have the help of our sheriffs and anybody else that might need to come in, but the thing, the basic thing I want to get is that this is not going to affect the city budget. This is all volunteer work on all their parts, and I believe what they're trying to do is a good thing, and I thank you very much. I know I had to cut my, whatever I had to say, short, but I appreciate your help, and God bless you all.
Thank you.
No more speakers cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. No more speakers on this? Do we have correspondents on this? I don't believe so. Did we? So without objection, we'll close the public hearing, and you may all have some discussion with staff.
Do we have an ordinance number for this?
It has not been assigned yet. It will be assigned before it goes in front of council, should you, well, should you...
So should it be XXXX? Six? Quadruple X?
You can just call it the proposed ordinance, the as-yet-unnamed ordinance.
Don't go there, okay?
I apologize. I apologize. Make myself right. Okay, I would like to make a motion to adopt proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 17.42 of the Lancaster Municipal Code, Alcoholic Beverage Establishments, and repeal of previously adopted ordinance Number 1013.
Second.
Let's do this again. I got flustered. I gave you the whole request, I'm sorry. Adopt...
You guys, or something else?
Okay, it's going down.
All right, let's wait a minute. All right.
I need a few.
Commissioner Smith, you have a motion?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 16-08, recommending the city council adoption of ordinance number to be determined, and repeal of ordinance Number 1013.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any questions, comments, discussion?
I just wanted to say that Mayor Paris challenged the community to be engaged in this city business, and I want to thank all of you, business owners, staff, for all the hard work in making this happen, and I just really would hope that you stay engaged, because we were up here, and there was nobody at the first meeting on 1013. So we do look for direction from the citizens. That's what we are up here as your advocates, and trying to fit this stuff in to make it as least impactful as possible, and to get the most bang for the buck. Thank you all.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Ready to vote? Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0, and it will be scheduled for the October city council meeting.
Very good, thank you. Want to keep going? Anybody want to take a break? Keep going? All right. What time does Dancing with the Stars come on? Huh?
The DVR is a four.
Okay. Now, if we haven't had enough fun, we're going to take up a discussion of a proposal or proposals, as it might relate to potential medical cannabis ordinances. Merle, you're not leaving, are you? We've been asked by the city council to discuss the appropriateness of establishing medical cannabis grow, or growers, I should say, and the opportunity to grow or manufacture medical cannabis within the city limits of the city. There was also some discussion about the potential of sales, however, that was somewhat secondary to the discussion, or the directive, to take up this issue. And once we make a determination, or come to a, not necessarily consensus, however, whatever our position may be, either individually or as a group, as to the appropriateness of the growing of medical cannabis within the city limits, then whether we're for it or against it, or neutral, we've been asked to consider the draft, or drafting of, and directing staff to prepare an ordinance authorizing the grow of medical cannabis in the community. That's, as I recall, that's about it. Am I right?
I think you've summarized it well, yes.
Right. And we have the Assistant City Attorney here tonight, we have the city attorney here tonight, who's hiding in the back of the room. Welcome.
Thank you.
And we have city staff here tonight.
Chairman, I'm sorry, before you begin the discussion, I just want a point of clarification. You mentioned, you used the term manufacturing, you said growing and cultivation and manufacturing. Just a reminder that manufacturing is a different activity from cultivation. That is actually like distilling down or extracting, turning it into something else. So just, it seems like a distinction without a difference, but it is a distinction with a difference. Thanks.
Well, we've been provided with some draft documents that will take up second, as a second item. The first item is really the appropriateness of medical cannabis cultivation, if you will, to define it as narrowly as possible, and how we might want to address that. How do we feel about it? Who wants to lead off? Anyone? Go right ahead.
I'm very supportive. I think it's a chance for us to serve our community in a non-discriminatory or judgmental way. I feel that cannabis itself is far less side effects than manufactured drugs. I feel that there is some street, I don't know the term of it, but it's a chemically-made marijuana that's going around right now that's making many people ill. I feel we could use some of our commercial buildings for this use. There's no money that changes hands, there's no people that go in and out, it's not for sale on that premise, and I feel we could tax it. The city could get revenue, we could better serve our community by increasing law enforcement. So I think we could do a lot of good with this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
A point of clarification, a tax would have to go in front of the public to be voted on.
That is correct.
So the only, the only fee that the city could have would be a fee, or some sort of regulation that would say that they had to part of the business license code?
You can adopt, a regulatory fee can be adopted, but the costs that make up that fee, you need to be able to support, that goes to regulating that particular industry. So you can't really make a profit on a regulatory fee, otherwise, it's a tax.
So if the impact of the fee...
So it's revenue negative, or neutral?
That is correct.
Okay.
So what about part of the fee be addressed to education, or rehab, things like that? Is that possible, that the city could have that in these regulations as part of the fee?
My gut tells me no, but I'm going to defer to Ms. Burns on this. She is going to be taking the lead on, if any ordinance is going to be drafted, Ms. Burns and her firm will be doing it, so you might want to ask her to come on down, take a seat, and answer your questions.
Come on down.
I'll go with Michelle. That is, we are looking into how far a fee...
From the actual costs of regulating the cultivation, we can go with a fee. That's part of the scope of what we are looking at right now, as we work on a draft ordinance. I wanted to get from you some input as to the types of things you would be interested in pursuing. If you're talking about rehab and those types of things, that's part of what we can look into. I will say, it is not clear in the law that we would be able to go that far.
However, the first thing we're taking up is the discussion of the appropriateness in the community, and then...
And then the question of what revenue, if any...
Hard to keep them separate.
Right. There are several revenue stream options available. There's the fee, there's a tax, tax requires a vote, and if our fee is more than the costs of implementing the program, then it is deemed a tax, and it is unlawful for having not had the vote required for a tax.
Thank you. I share a very similar background to Commissioner Cook. We were both respiratory therapists, we went through quite a bit of medical training together, so we're well aware of the side effects of the normal allopathic type of drugs, and medical marijuana, medical cannabis, excuse me, has proven itself to be a very viable option. I personally know people that are, receive great relief, and they do not have to take some of the very hard narcotics to keep them out of the pain. So I think that it would be appropriate that the city should look at it as a possibility. Now, there is always the public safety, and the draft ordinances that I've read were very much into security, very much into surveillance. There were a couple of things, like you can't deliver it, but how in the world can you grow it? You just store it, but it ended up having to be delivered. Not to step on Chairman Vos on the appropriateness of it, I think it's pretty much a foregone conclusion, that it's going to happen, and if Lancaster doesn't do it, we will probably in the future wish we did.
That, I understand your position, and I thank you for it, and it's not my place to state whether I think it's appropriate or inappropriate, but those types of safety issues and things that need to be addressed, and I welcome the input from Mr. Durico on the safety front, are the types of things that we are looking at now. And we do have that draft ordinance that was circulated to you, and that's one of the base documents from which we're working to work something up to present to you.
And the source of those draft ordinances that were provided is?
That was from a firm that represents cultivators. So it is a law firm that represents cultivators. So their stance is one in favor of cultivation, and so we are looking at it with a very careful eye.
And is it true that Salinas and Desert Hot Springs has approved this, or engaged in that? And then I used the word tax, I should have used the word fee. And can...
And can a fee be allocated per square foot or something like that within the commercial or building? And of course, of course, it's got to be with security cameras. Everything needs to be planned out appropriately.
Right.
But Commissioner, shall we, let's, until we get off point here, let's focus on the appropriateness of the city even considering supporting the opportunity to have that type of business to grow the product, which it is a product, within the community. That's where we should focus first. Can we?
Agree.
And the two I've heard from believe it's appropriate.
Well, we have a history of helping out our local brewers that are creating alcohol, which has a huge impact on health and has a huge impact. So I think that appropriate, I mean, we can't discriminate. As Commissioner Cook said, there's going to be one or there can be both. We would just have to, I know I was told by Ms. Corbett that there was contradictions in the law, but I don't see how we cannot move forward.
There's contradictions in the proposed proposition, which is before the voters this November for recreational use of cannabis, actually, they call it, they don't call it cannabis, I don't think. I think they call it marijuana. However-
I think it's marijuana.
-not allowed to use the term marijuana. It's cannabis, 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 cannabis. Remember that. Right? You were going to say something. Go ahead. You were.
So two things. From a smart, no pun intended, growth perspective for this great city. If we have, if it's revenue neutral outside of a medical benefit for our great citizens, what does that do for us as a city today? If it's revenue neutral? That's just a question. So that's the first question that I have. And the other, the second is, is a comment. And this is more along the lines of my day job. So as, as one that holds a top secret Department of Defense clearance, which is obviously federal Department of Defense, I just want to make it clear first of all that I've never partake, partaken in cannabis. But I do want to give my honest opinion that if it's smart growth for this city and if it's, I was hoping you guys didn't say it wasn't revenue neutral, that I am in support of that. But can anyone answer the question as far as if it's revenue neutral, what's the benefit for the city right now, this five minutes?
I don't think anybody wants to answer that question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If it's, if it's revenue neutral, I think the benefit is perhaps some jobs for the actual facilities. It'd be additional business. That's all I can think of at this time.
Okay. That's fair. Thank you.
Impossible. Depending on how the grow is classified, whether it be internal or external, the potential of utilization of existing non performing buildings.
Sure. That utilization of existing facilities, if we're talking about an indoor grow requirement or even possibility, that would potentially allow use of existing buildings for a business that is not presently there.
Yeah, what I've heard from some sources, that there's the thought that some closed retail buildings could possibly be used. And my comment was not exact, but along the lines of typically those types of buildings in shopping centers or other locations have a very stringent restrictions under the CCNRs that are extraordinarily difficult to change or attempt to even litigate and change. That's my opinion only from my personal experience. You're nodding your head.
Having been involved in such litigation, I would have to concur.
Challenging at best.
Well played.
This is only the appropriateness of medical cannabis, not recreational growing. Because recreational growing is-
Growing, whatever, whatever its potential use may be, what I've heard is benefit to the, to the potential consumer who would, at the, you know, what's the correlation between a grow in this community to the benefit to our citizens? That's, that's the nexus I'm looking for. And I think others may be too. The ultimate utilization of the, of the product for health benefits is a different story altogether. It's, you know, what's the direct benefit to allow that to take place in our community? What does our community get out of it? Two things so far. Maybe jobs and maybe utilization of closed buildings, closed buildings who, whose value, whose tax value isn't going to change two cents. It's being assessed for its real estate value, not for the revenue it produces. So at least so far in California, we haven't got to that point, but give it a while. I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, 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 I understand it. So that helps, you know, saying jobs because in that case, jobs in that, from a tax based perspective, I mean, people buy homes and so there's an offshoot of that. But I guess I do need to know more, I would like to know more about the utilization of the closed buildings. Is there any opportunity there based on what you just mentioned?
I suppose there's, certainly there's got to be opportunity there, but-
With the CCNRs being difficult to change?
You know, most modern shopping centers have covenants and restrictions at a minimum for retail utilization. So if, let's just say you've got a closed Walmart, for instance, in a, in a shopping center in the community that somebody may look at. Well, I personally know for a fact that the CCNRs in that center restrict it to retail use. That's why you've seen it sit there vacant for 15 years. And Walmart's still paying minimum on them. So who's losing? Potential job. But if you, if you have a use that can't take place in that space, where are you going to do it? Where, you know, if we think it's a good idea, then you draft an ordinance and decide where you're going to put it. But if, you know, typically, it's these, the covenants, conditions and restrictions require all of the fee owners to agree to make a modification. So if you have one fee owner that owns eight Taco Bell, for instance, and, or Wendy's, that'd be a good one. Wendy's, if it's, and their ownership decides that they're not in favor of any kind of cannabis. They don't care what happens in this, you know, in California. Answer is no, you're not changing the CCNRs. Then the building sits. I mean, that's the reality of it. Unless I'm overstating that.
Are there CCNRs for industrial properties like empty warehouses?
Yeah, there's CCNRs too, but it, you know, every parcel's different. Every development's different. But retail centers, modern retail centers, at least in my experience, have those kinds of restrictions on them. I mean, I've been through the process of attempting to make modifications to CCNRs and ended up litigating them and ended up getting it shoved in my ear in other places. And it's very difficult. So, you know, is there enough money out there to buy your way out of a CCNR? Yeah, there might be. But that's, you know, that's between the potential tenant user and the property owner co-tenancy. You can't assume that just because you say, yeah, it's okay in a community to do it, that it's actually going to happen. No matter where you put it. So. Nina Smith, were you going to say something?
No, I'm, I'm, excuse me, just kind of listening to what everyone has to say and I'm kind of in the same, well, you, Commissioner Hall, I mean, talked about the, the benefits and seeing people who benefited and we've kind of got a little off track. But, and you too, what is the immediate benefit to, to our community? And seems jobs if we have a place to, to do it, right?
If you look at the, if you look at the blogs and the press coverage of Cathedral City and Desert Hot Springs, forget the other one. They're bankrupt communities. And it was somewhat of a last resort, in my opinion, to even enter into this arena in the first place. I can't, I haven't been able to figure out yet if those communities had a ballot measure to allow them to quote, "tax" the operator. But clearly there, the city's websites say, they use the word "tax."
My understanding is they did.
Okay.
In Desert Hot Springs, they actually approved two taxes. One was a 10% sales tax and the other was a per square foot or per eight, I guess per square foot, just-
But it was a vote of the people.
That is correct. Both of them, yes.
And, and the, and the marketing campaign was, we're bankrupt, we need the revenue. Would that be a-
I don't know what the marketing campaign was, but that might have been an appropriate one.
Yeah. So we're not bankrupt, are we? Great. That's a good thing. Lights are still on.
Let me, let me do that again with the mic on. No.
So that just tells me we're being more strategic as opposed to being tactical.
Maybe. So it's only a five kiloton instead of a 50? Anyone else care to offer comment?
I support it.
Hmm? Okay. All right. So the consensus is from my colleagues that it's a cautious support. Am I reading you all pretty well?
Absolutely.
Five to one. I don't support the concept at all. I think it's bad policy, bad government. So the medical cannabis growers industry has presented two potential draft ordinances that have been supplied to us for our consideration. And do we want to go through it page by page, fine tune it? Or would it be appropriate then to discuss the principal points? What would you like to do?
Well, my understanding is that if we are going to be adopting something similar to this is that it's going to be grown in some kind of, I guess, lack of a better word, factory. Is that correct?
My understanding of what was requested to be prepared was an ordinance for indoor cultivation, secured cultivation, 24 hour security and other similar provisions along the lines of what's in these draft ordinances. I had not heard any direction and if that, if that direction is something you want me to go, please say so. But I had not heard anything about outdoor cultivation or anything that would be much more difficult to secure.
And indoor?
Yeah, indoor. So indoor cultivation with security and provisions for this, for public safety issues.
Okay. So it's, so numbers have been thrown around using the industry represented model that Cathedral City and Desert Hot Springs are using of a 25,000 square foot structure as a maximum. That, is that what it was? Something like that?
Sorry, I'm not finding the max size right this second.
Yeah, that's okay. In that range. So would we want to limit, you know, suggest limiting the size of the facility? And possibly their location? I know in the past, we've taken up, I think we've, I don't know if, yeah, I think we did, or maybe we didn't, adopt a sexual oriented business zoning requirement, zoning location requirement, right? So maybe it would be appropriate if the, if the appropriateness of establishing this type of a use in the community is viewed by members of the community who aren't here tonight to even discuss it with us, that location is very important and that it ought to be treated with a very sensitive ordinance. Maybe we approach it similarly to the sexual oriented business model as a, I mean, as a starting point. I mean, we have already got all that on the books, right? And it works. We don't need to reinvent the wheel, do we? Or do we?
It could certainly be a starting point. Sure.
According to this page here, Business and Professionals Code, there's a lot of different types of cultivator licenses. One through type one all the way up to a type four. And they all have different square footage requirements. What is the purpose of having a maximum square footage? It's this one.
Type 3A indoor up to 22,000 square feet?
Yes, there are four-
So I guess that's the maximum under the BNP, under the current state law, right? That be the way, the way it's viewed?
Correct.
So for instance, if you've got a retail shopping center with a, with a closed market in it, at 40,000 square feet, you would be able to use 52% of it.
Correct.
56% of it, whatever. So the, you know, the likelihood of finding a retail space at 22,000 feet without having to do some work on it, demise it and whatever you need to do, probably pretty slim. Although with industrial space, existing industrial space or someone building a new building, state of the art to serve this type of use, might, might be a whole lot easier. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't utilize existing closed buildings that aren't producing any jobs, but if you want to establish it, that's, you know, I don't know, establish hard, hardened target security.
There's no doubt it would have to be very secure.
But the current BNP allows you to go up to 22,000 feet, right?
Correct.
No, no more than that.
Is that just 22,000 square feet of gross space or 22,000 feet total for the building? I mean, wouldn't there be ancillary equipment?
I think it's gross space, but I would have to confirm.
It's everything, huh?
If they're in sections? I think that's how it works. If there's so many sections within the facility of the building?
I will admit my ignorance as to how cannabis grow facilities are operated. I don't know.
Well, I could be, I'd be happy to talk to you about hydroponic growth since I dealt with that for years as a narcotics detective. Okay, but there's other issues that may here that to be considered beyond just the scope of the fact someone's growing marijuana. Because there's going to be significant regulatory issues about male plants, female- issues about male plants, female plants, THC content, all those things along with the fact that there's byproduct from this, pesticides, there's all kinds of things that come into play here. So I can say to you that even though we're talking about just strictly based on what's in the BNP sections as it exists today, that regulatory issues haven't even been established yet by the state and where that's going to come down to. So, yes, there's probably a responsible method to do it, security being the number one issue, because what's occurring in other places throughout the state and other states is a certain amount of criminal behavior that to go and take their product away from them, okay? So there's all kinds of issues as it relates to that as well. I would say to you that I think we probably need to have more clarification, not coming from this third-party entity who wrote this, as their experts, okay, and actually have a discussion with Sacramento as far as BNP sections and how that's going to be applied and how they exactly expect the layout to be, what the regulatory factors are and what's the community's responsibility for those regulatory factors, because it's going to fall on somebody. And that's all part of when we talk about how much to charge for a fee and all those things need to be considered into that, because that will be all part of that, that cost model to justify those fees.
Certainly sounds like a lot of new jobs.
I don't, I, jobs for who?
The THC testers?
I don't know. I mean, it depends on how that's going to become down, but who's responsible is my question.
Trim of the buds. And I think it's the male buds trim, I don't know if it's the female. I'm not sure.
More than I know.
Don't start, okay? Well. I'll ask myself the question, what's the hurry? The hurry is, we've been directed to do it, that's the hurry. Typically, our, the way we as a commission address things, whether we're directed to do it or whether it's on our own motion, we spend usually a considerable amount of time reviewing proposals and making our own individual inquiries, asking the community to get, to give us input. However, our deadline on this is next month, right?
Yes, I will be bringing you back something next month. So I, I would appreciate any thoughts as to what you'd like that something to be.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, just, just from a pure land use regulatory standpoint, some things that may be helpful, is this something that you would want to have a conditional use permit required for? Or would you, as you mentioned, the city's sexually-oriented business ordinance, that does not have that requirement, it simply-
Use by right, it's a use by right.
Simply says, if you meet these requirements, you, you are issued a permit. So that kind of discussion, I think, would be helpful. Also, what kind of zoning classification or classifications would you think might be appropriate for this? I, I think that would help us in, in the preparation of this, those kinds of discussions.
Well, certainly it's going to need a CUP, because we require it for alcohol establishments, so would seem to me that each case should be brought up here and decided on the merits, and we can then discuss whether or not the building they pick would have the right CCNRs, or those could be part of the discovery process that our planning people, planning staff would say, well, you have CCNRs, it'd be one of the first things on the list to be checked. I'm with Chairman Boz, though, I would much rather take a six months to hash this out, because anything made in haste usually has problems.
10-13 is a prime example.
Exactly.
I didn't say that, did I?
I'm not sure that we're going to need 10 months. Obviously, the majority of the commission is in agreement that we should move with this. Obviously, the city attorney, we're going to have to come up with something, and she's asking for recommendations of what we would like to see. Commissioner Hall, Vice Chairman Hall is recommending, you know, what is it that we're going to regulate, how big is it that we're going to regulate it? So I don't feel personally that we'd have to wait, you know, maybe that long, either we're going to do it or we're not going to do it. It's very simple to me, and if I'm misunderstanding it, please let me know, but the bottom line again is, we're going to grow in the city of Lancaster, Lancaster, we're going to be growing marijuana, and it's going to be inside, well-protected, security, secured. It's a benefit to the community as far as tax, revenue or jobs opportunity, is that correct?
I, I would not say tax revenue, because it's revenue neutral-
I strike that.
Yeah, you strike that. Potentially for jobs. Presumably, these facilities would require employees. I, I don't know how many. I, again, my knowledge of the intricacies of growing medical marijuana is limited. I heard the, a statement that we, sounds like we would want a CUP for each use, am I getting, I'm not even, I'm getting one, two nods, two nods.
Would we want to limit the number potentially of these types of facilities in our community?
I would think that's something we should explore and discuss as far as how many. I would, I would treat it similar to our alcohol. I would want distances away from, so many feet away from churches and schools. As far as jobs, how many? I'm sure we can do some research to what is the typical maximum square footage of staff that they need, and then, of course, you need the ancillary staff to install cameras and security people and that kind of infrastructure.
Okay. Director Ludicki recommended a statement about what zones you would like to consider this in.
Well, if you're going to put them, if you don't want them near churches and schools and people, it's in a, in a heavy industrial zone-
Heavy industrial.
Yeah, it's so many-
In the hinterland, Foxfield or someplace like that, I suppose, or-
Yeah.
What?
Could we have a standards conditions list also, like we have set up? And then you could just X out the ones you don't want for each, each individual?
So one grow per 100,000 people? So if you've got 182,900, you can only have one, but as soon as you get 200,000 plus one? No, you don't do that? Want one, you want two, you want 50?
I'm not sure, I don't know what the answer to that is.
I, I don't either, but, but we want to consider that.
Right, we need to consider it.
So the bottom line is, we need to take, and again, grassroots, look at this. There's so many, there's a lot of ambiguity, and just like, you know, you said, we don't, there's a lot of us that don't have any knowledge, I would hope none of us have any, other than Mr. Durico, because I just learned for the first time the male, female plant, I, I show my ignorance of it, but I think we need to have a concentrated look at, from the bottom, I mean, grassroots, get in a room, not that I, not that we need more meetings, but there's a lot that goes into this. We could nod our heads and say that we're in agreement or not in agreement, but, but what's that next step? This is where the real work begins now, in my mind. It sounds like you're asking for a workshop? We almost, in order to make, well, we almost have to. Okay. All right. I'm hoping to have a first-
Do they need, do they need bee pollinization to grow marijuana?
I think they do that artificially, don't they? Yeah, they artificially pollinate.
You get high bees? You know, it was a segue nobody bought, so I had to just jump right in, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, for, for all other, you know, agricultural crops, for most, you know, you need bees, right? To pollinate?
Yes.
I think, remembering-
Generally, bees, birds-
High school biology or wherever we got it, you know?
Butterflies.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
I wonder, you know, I was curious.
I think a workshop's a really good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I think the thing is, is you can go a lot of directions on this. I think the reality of it is, is, you know, what's that standard going to be for security? How sophisticated are the people qualified for that security? There's been issues other places, I think, and poisonings and all kinds of issues that are going on. So I think the reality of it is, is something crafted that Allison can put together from the city's perspective, based on what your concerns are, that's responsible. And that's the big question, I think, that I got from the council was, how do we responsibly administer a program in the interest of the community and public safety? And that's a very difficult position to be in as it relates to this topic. And that's, that's the thing. And I think historically, what's been taking place. But I can certainly bring in members from narcotics team, from the headquarters bureau to talk to you about their level of expertise, maybe weigh in on where the sheriff's department thinks this falls in, is based on some of the regulatory issues that's related to it. And I will caution you, Business and Profession Code is usually more an administrative regulatory type code and not a more enforcement-type-minded code, okay? So it usually sets a standard.
Enforcement would be within the ordinance, the way it's administered, wouldn't it?
Right, so it's a guide more of anything else, but again, that's, you know, there's-
So if we hear from law enforcement and, and the levels of law enforcement that would be involved, not with the misuse of the, of the cannabis, but the impacts on law enforcement depending on sighting and operation, is really what we're talking about here. I mean, I can foresee, you know, something that's, a business that's within the confines of a community where other businesses are and residents live, they're the eyes and the ears. So when there's a problem, generally, call for service comes from citizens. So if you're in a remote location and there's problems, you know, the target is, is pretty remote and there isn't, there aren't a lot of eyes and ears. You have security, whatever that is, you know, is it armed security? You know, how many per square foot? I mean, and all this stuff. I'd, I'd prefer to hear from law enforcement as it relates to the grow activity and the location, not necessarily the merits of the utilization of the, of the product. I mean, I, you know, if, if doctors are prescribing it, whether they're selling the green cards because they are generating revenue or they're actually prescribing it to people that need it, is not the issue. I mean, we don't, we have no control over that. So, I mean, is that something you can arrange, Mr. Durico?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, we have several recognized experts on cultivation from the sheriff's department. We've already spoken to them in the past as this issue came forward, as far as where the sheriff's department position was going to land on dealing with, and mostly that was outdoor grows, okay? But I can tell you, you know, just locally, we've had some pretty sophisticated hydroponic grows that have existed, and they have created issues related to here. But the mere fact that these would go through a CUP process, it's a matter of public record, lets a certain element know where they are. So how do we manage that? So there's things that, those are issues that would be our responsibility to deal with as it relates to that. The other thing is, is as we talk about a fee structure, or wherever we want to say, revenues, remember those deputy sheriffs are $2.27 a minute, okay? So as we look at that, a regular 40-hour car, deputy sheriff for this city with radio car and overheads, $255,000 a year without liability. So I mean, if we're talking about something, that's where this square footage factor and cost model, all those things need to be discussed. So again, not, anyone's arguing with the viability or merits or the medical benefit for, you know, people suffering. The issue is, where does it really land as a resource management issue for us? So what's an appropriate fee?
Mr. Durico, when we do have this sit-down with your experts, would you show, have them look at some of the places that already have the grow, that's legal grow, and then what kind of impact it's had around them, crime stats before, crime stats after, whether or not crime went up or crime went down, since it's been legalized? I mean, there's-
That would be such an infancy stage as it relates on, because some of those haven't even, they, even though they've approved it, they haven't developed that to get any kind of substantial relation. But I can tell you by other states that we presented already forward, and I will be happy to forward all that information to each one of you, as some of the impact it's had in other locations.
But in California, it's relatively new, and the, I mean, the two cities in the south desert, low desert, have not constructed a facility that, that meets their zoning regulation, right? I mean, it's being promulgated by the industry-
It's my understanding.
So they can establish these businesses, right?
That's, my understanding is that the availability is there to establish the businesses, but I don't believe they're any up and running yet.
Right. That's been my research too, so. Okay. Anything else we want, any other hot-button points we should be talking about? Go ahead.
Pardon my ignorance of your usual protocols. It, would it be normal practice to try and schedule such a workshop now while you're all here, or would it be normal practice for staff to contact you and try and arrange that? I, I apologize, I don't know your usual protocols for trying to set up a special.
Usually, if, if we're available collectively and want to take up special meetings on this subject, we'll usually decide it here-
Right here.
And then let staff coordinate it.
Okay.
Considering the compressed time schedule that we're working under, I think that we need to, to have a special meeting, so.
Yeah. But how soon? You know, how much time, how much time will you all need to put a draft before us, document before us and arrange to have the appropriate resource available to come visit with us?
I think I can have a draft to you end of the week.
Oh, my.
That's, that's my hope, so.
Weekend reading.
I'm sorry? Weekend reading, yes.
Weekend reading, yeah.
Congratulations. So, you know, next week would be within the scope of possibility from the drafting perspective, from the coordinating, the folks you want there perspective, it may be a little longer. Would you like me to work with Mr. Durico to coordinate that and then have staff contact you for your respective availabilities next week or early the following?
I mean, we typically meet on Mondays.
I, I'm out of-
Go ahead.
I'm on vacation the second tonight.
What?
I know, I'll be out of the country.
What? Where are you going?
Just Mexico, but still out of the country.
Well, you can-
So I know that our, our study session's on the 10th, correct?
The 17th.
The planning commission meeting's on-
Regular. The 10th is a Columbus day, we're going to-
Oh.
Is that an off day?
What day is it?
Monday.
I don't think it's a holiday, is it?
I don't think city hall is closed on the 10th, no.
Not for you guys, it is for the, for the state. They've got a lot of holidays.
I'm available, I don't get it off.
So could we come in early?
That's what I was going to say, come in early.
Early is whatever you want to make early.
On the 10th?
What time? Can you get three?
So I'm going to be in the Palmdale office that day, I already know that, so what time?
Would we want, would we want to get together before our regular study session? That's the question. In the next couple of weeks? Maybe two weeks from tonight, even though you'll be enjoying yourself in Mexico.
That would be the 3rd. October 3rd.
Would that give you all enough time?
I would think, Mr. Durico, you could have most of it, have to try and get it ready together.
Gee, I'm having a root canal that day.
That'll make for a great meeting.
This'll be, you know, hey, this'll be a relief.
Get you a card.
Oh, my.
That's right.
Third work, for you?
Yes. Regular time, 5:30?
Well, I don't know, let's, want to do it at 5:30, you want to do it at 5, you want to do it at 4?
Staff's available anytime.
4:00 is good.
Do you want to do 5?
You're the one with the, with the tough schedule.
I'm here that day.
Are you here?
Yes, I'm here that day.
Can we do it at 5:00?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 5 o'clock on the 3rd.
Okay. I will endeavor to get you a draft sufficiently in advance so that you can have an opportunity to review it without...
And as a reminder to ourselves, we don't communicate with one another via email...
Or any other way.
Or individually, for that matter. So, so would we meet in, here or would we meet in the conference room?
That would be a special meeting, so we would need to make it publicly available, so I would recommend we meet here.
Okay.
If it's 5:00 PM, not 5:30?
Make it 5:00, yeah.
We will, we will verify that the, that the chambers are available at that time.
So when we adjourn, we'll adjourn to that date.
I recommend you merely adjourn, and then if we set a special, we set a special.
Yeah, but we adjourn to the October 3rd instead of the 10th.
That doesn't interfere with that election or anything, does it?
No. No.
Yeah, I don't believe they're storing anything in here.
They're not storing anything in here, no. It's all in the clerk's office.
Anything further on this subject? Anyone? No? Okay. Thank you. Director's announcements?
None, Mr. Chairman.
None, all right. Anything on our agenda? Yes. Net zero.
I can give you an update on that if you'd like.
Okay.
City staff is continuing to work through the definition of that. I just actually had a conversation with Warren Bennett, the city's building official, probably about an hour before this meeting began. And what he is working on is actually a meeting that would pull into it the current active builders in the area, so that they have an understanding of what the actual definition of zero net energy means. And that's been really one of the key discussion points to this, to this effort so far. We expect that we'll be in a position to give you an update at your next regular meeting.
Okay. I was asked about it recently. On our, on our to-do list? Net zero's the only thing on our to-do list?
Yeah, I think, I think you're taking up the other items at this point. The alcohol one you handled tonight, medical cannabis cultivation you're working on now.
Okay. All right, very good. Anything from the members before we adjourn? Nope? Okay. So, no, no public here? A little warm out?
Yep.
So then, the meeting is adjourned to a special meeting, October 3rd at 5:00 PM here at City Hall. The location will be posted. It'll either be in this space or another space, but it will be a public meeting. And it's a work-study meeting, so there will, will be interaction among, among members and staff and invited guests, but there will be no deliberation nor voting. All right? Okay. So we're adjourned. Thank you all for your work tonight.